Rain on during the meeting.
Nice.
I looked at the top of the agenda. I looked at the top of the agenda.
Good, good, all right.
Oh, it's me.
All right. All right, you guys ready?
Yep.
Okay, and the green light is on. It is four o'clock on October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and we will call the Kerrville City Council Workshop Agenda or Workshop to Order. And the first thing, we want to officially welcome Mr. Rice to his first official workshop. So glad to have you here. All right, any public comments?
No ma'am.
All right, we'll move right into funding for fire trucks.
Madam Mayor, Council, today we want to present some information about a fire or fire engine replacement plan and proposed funding operation. So I'll talk about the first portion, of course, about kind of where we're at with our fleet, some of the challenges we're seeing, and then the plan going forward. And then Julie will talk more about the funding options. So the current fleet consists of four primary engines. We have one reserve engine and one aerial platform. The vision of what we're looking to do with the Kerrville Fire Department is expand our fleet to six engines and one aerial apparatus. So what this is going to do, we have four primary engines, we have four stations. There is one engine at each station, so they respond day to day what you hear. What we want to do for the future is put two additional response-ready reserve engines that can provide support during high-volume calls, expanding operations. If we have multiple alarms for a fire, so where we need more engine companies on scene, whether we're providing mutual aid. We have extended repair times now post-COVID. We do live fire and driver operator, operator training, promotional practice and testing and other circumstances. So we currently only have one. So if you imagine, we have four engines at each station, we have one reserve that can fill these other duties as we go through each and every day. So the current engine fleet averages twelve years old. So we have two fire engines that are two thousand and nineteen. Two of them are from two thousand and seven, and then one of those is from two thousand and four, which I'll talk about in a second. So what are some of the challenges we're seeing? So the cost of the fire engine was five hundred and seventy-five thousand in two thousand and eighteen. Now, that same one from the vendor is about nine hundred and fifty thousand for the same engine if we were to order that back in May. So that is a significant increase in cost post-COVID. The same vendor had a delivery time in two thousand and eighteen of twenty-two months compared to forty-four months now. And so another significant change. They're getting better, they're making some adjustments, but that is still the lead time that we're seeing out there for the engines. A lot of the engines we do are custom-built engines, so they're not something you pick up off a lot out there. So that is standard with our vendors. Parts have an extended lead time, causing the apparatus to be out of service for extended periods of time and not unusual for four to five weeks. That's a challenge that we worked together with Guillermo and his team, that it's just, it's just where we're at. I think recently we had a part shipped out of England, I believe. So, and I think we're waiting on that one to come in, or it just came in. So, and that had extended lead time. I'm sorry.
About four weeks.
Four weeks is what we had to wait for that. So that does include the other time to diagnose it. We still have to get it to somewhere to do that, to determine what it is, and then place the order. So we're having extended. So that brings our fleet down, and I talked about that reserve. And now one of our primary engines is out of service, and so our reserve engine is operating in that capacity. The city's fleet has one reserve that's routinely in service while the primary engine's waiting for parts or maintenance. That is a two thousand and four, which I'll talk about in a second. And if we have two engines out of service for parts and maintenance, then we have to staff our aerial platform for daily fire operations and first responder. So our truck one aerial platform, no more than a couple of weeks ago, was at Station Three. They were operating out of it. So they still respond, they still provide lift assist with, for Mrs. Jones, so responding in one of our aerial platforms. That's not what that apparatus is designed for. That apparatus is designed for either block, heavy rescue, and/or fire operations for our commercial structures, not for the first responder. So to maintain that capacity respond, we have to put that engine in service in that capacity because we only have one reserve. The two thousand and four reserve engine, poor condition. The, the original emergency lights are discontinued, and now we have to locate aftermarket to retrofit the lights, another challenge. So we actually have right now one of the lights. We have to rewire it if we're going to put one of the side emergency lights on it, and it's just in poor condition because it's two thousand and four. So they just don't have the parts for those anymore. The other challenge for those, a lot of other things have changed since two thousand and four, safety things specifically. So nowadays, especially in today, the ones we're looking at now, from even the two thousand and nineteen engines, that the curtain airbags, so the airbags for the cab all the way around, actually more than curtain, it's an entire cab airbags. So a lot of other safety features there that you just don't have in our older fleet. So the replacement plan. So the previous replacement plan concept was to staff a primary unit, so the frontline engine, the four that we have, for fifteen years. So in ten years, they would operate in a reserved capacity before we start a discussion of replacement plan. Some of that was fine when it was five hundred and seventy-five thousand, so able to manage, Julie will talk more about that in a second. But now they're closer to a million. So that is a different story when we talk about replacement plans and have to have that conversation of where we're at, especially when we talk about a potential up to forty-four month delivery time. So this is not a sustainable model based on our current cost, service delivery expectations, and the extended production times. So we're currently working as part of an asset replacement team to implement a separate replacement plan for fire apparatus. So we recommend a fleet maintenance management plan that provides a vision to allow for financial planning, maintain our service delivery, and be consistent with NFPA standards. The plan would order two fire engines in two thousand and twenty-four with anticipated delivery in two thousand and twenty-seven. I put three years and change. So this will replace a two thousand and four fire engine and keep a two thousand and seven fire engine to the fleet, giving us a total of six in the fleet. Future purchases for engines would be one fire engine every three years to maintain a twenty-one-year replacement plan. That will keep them on the front line for twelve to fifteen years, and then they will rotate into a reserve status for the final six years until we get the replacement plan from there. So this fleet management plan will keep our fleet where we need it. It'll allow for growth of where we need to go as a community and also be able to maintain our capacity of response. So with that, I will turn it over to Julie.
Thank you, Chief. So we've been working on this for several months, trying to come up with some, some options that fit basically the city and our current asset replacement plans and those kind of things. And so Chief and his team have been working hard to develop a plan that makes sense so that we can then figure out how we're going to pay for it. So I get the fun part. So we looked at multiple options to how do we fund these and how do we fund them over years going forward? And so what we found is pretty much any dealer does a lease purchase option. So regardless of what dealer that we might choose. The problems with those are the high interest. So at, right now, dealer options are about seven percent interest. And we do have to make initial upfront payments. So basically what they do is they fund the entire amount to an escrow account and let it sit there. And so when you order the fire truck and it gets into the build process, you start making payments on that throughout, just like a construction drawdown or anything else. So that money sits there, and we start paying interest on that, whether we've utilized it or not. So, so we'll start making payments on those in about twenty-four months, give or take. This particular option would have to come out of general, general fund asset replacement, and so we know what that fund looks like, and we've continued to talk about that. It's making progress, and I will say using those excess ARPA dollars that you guys approved to purchase some police vehicles really helped us kind of dig into some of the need that we've been working on so that, we're hoping that that has leveled it out some. However, still a pretty big hit to that. So this, most of the dealers offer a turn-in truck replacement, so similar to what we do with enterprise lease, where at the end of the lease period, we can either keep it at a book value replacement cost that we would pay, or we can turn it in and basically start the lease over. So that's pretty much how that works. Wells Fargo also has a municipal lease program, and so it's for any kind of equipment, but they do fire trucks a lot. They have a three- to seven-year term, they won't do any longer than ten. And so most of the dealers offer up to a ten-year lease, given the amount of these. So anything that we were to do with Wells Fargo, the lease is executed whenever we sign that lease. So when we decide to go into a lease with them, which we would have to have in place prior to being able to order because we'd have to prove up funding. And then it works pretty much the same. They fund it to an escrow account, and then we make payments along the way, and then we use those funds that Wells Fargo would then pay to the dealership or the, you know, the manufacturer at that time throughout the draw stage. So.
Same interest?
Well, right now Wells Fargo is five percent, but theirs is a lot more market-based than a lease program, so that's going to fluctuate with the market. Today, the rate I got back for confirmation was five percent as of today, where most of the lease programs through the dealers were seven. We didn't find any less than that. So it kind of works the same exact way. We did look at like some private funding, so if we were just to go out and get a car loan, basically. We looked at some of those, but all those interest rates are five and a half or better right now for, for those options. So lease payment options, on average, we'd be paying about a hundred and seventy-four or seventy-five thousand dollars a year per truck. So to the asset replacement plan, just round it and say three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So that's before we address any other needs of the city that, you know, that would be pre-committed, just like our current leases are right now, so.
Can you, I'm trying to look at the very bottom. You said Wells Fargo uses the escrow as a draw account. Do the other dealers do the same thing?
It's similar, and, and each one has a little bit different structure depending on which dealership you use, but it's very similar. Like all those leasing programs are essentially the same. So once they start making payments on your behalf to the, the manufacturer for the build, then we start paying interest on that money. So, but there, there's a little variation depending on who you were to use, but they're structurally, they're the same.
Julie, you said something a while ago, and I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Construction draw. Now, do we only pay interest on the portion of the money that goes toward the build of the truck at the time until it's finished?
Right, so on Wells Fargo, though, because they fund it all to an escrow account, then we're paying interest on the total. So their interest is less, but we're paying interest on the money they're setting aside for us essentially. To where on a dealership lease, they're funding it as they go, and so we would pay, again, depending on the dealer that we chose, because there's a little different structurally, but it's just the basic structure is the same. So then we would be paying on what we have then sent to the manufacturer over time.
Is Wells Fargo the only bank that does?
No, we looked at, I just used that one because that's our pooled cash bank, and so I reached out to them first just to see what their options are. But we did look at some other banks, and even if we did a straight-up like lien holder type loan, then you're still going to pay five, five and a half percent. So that's just the market right now where we are. And actually, five and a half right now is pretty low for what we would consider this to be a title-held collateralized loan. Still pretty, that's a pretty decent rate.
Have you talked to Greg over at Centennial? Because I know they have a governmental lease program. They do some.
I have not. I mean, we, we did some broad spectrum checking, you know, with like just three or four that we've dealt with before. And the reason I used this one is because structurally, they were all about the same. I mean, everybody we compared to, they were very similar. So I didn't want to get too in-depth in that research until we talked through options in general. And, you know, if that's the direction, well, then, of course, we'll go out and, and source the best kind of product for us. We just kind of did a broad level dealer option, banking option, just straight-up collateral lien option to see how those looked, so. So funding option number two would be paying for these using tax notes. So this would be paid for by the General Fund Debt Service Fund. So basically, we would sell negotiated notes or issue a privately placed note, depending on, you know, what was better at the time. Typically, a private placement is going to be the preferred method because it's just kind of like going to a bank for a loan. And so we don't have to go through the S and P thing, and then a lot of the issuance costs we don't incur. So really, the only way that negotiated would be better in this circumstance, given that really this is a small amount, would be if negotiated sale was going to be, offer a substantially less interest rate. And we didn't, today, that's not the case. So we did private placement on the tax notes that we did for the generator. And it's, it's very efficient and very simple. It's kind of just working directly with the bank, whoever we choose for that product. Tax notes, again, do require council action, so that's via ordinance, so two readings for that. And then if that was the direction the council chose to go, we would sell those notes in January and receive those funds in February. And I'll talk through like the timeline that Chief Maloney has still on his side as far as selection of the vendor and all those kind of things that still have to happen, and how would that align overall? So in this situation, we would control the money, so we wouldn't be having to contact the bank or whomever to make progress payments for us. So we would control that a hundred percent, make our own progress payments along the way. And then also, we would be able to invest those funds when we weren't using them. So that would help offset just a little bit. It would be a draw payment, just like anything else, because that's what manufacturers require. They don't require that until they actually start build-out. So once we select the vendor, Chief Maloney selects all the options that would be necessary for his fleet, and then they would put that in line, so to speak. And when they get to our product and start building it, that's when our draw payments would begin. So right now, as of this, this week, a five-year term on a tax note is about four and a quarter percent. And then we had Hilltop just run some numbers on if we were to issue for five years or if we were to issue for seven years, what do those payments look like? And so remember, on the lease option, we were about three hundred and fifty thousand a year. Annual payment estimation on a five-year would be anywhere from four fifteen on the low to four fifty on the high side on the debt, and that's over a five-year period. And then they would mature on a five-year in February of two thousand and twenty-nine. And then seven-year, a little bit better interest rate, four point one nine, which is kind of good because we haven't really been seeing the longer term have a less interest rate. We've actually been seeing that a little bit reversed to market. But annual payment estimation for that would be three hundred on the low side and three thirty-six on the high side. Keeping in mind, this is a seven-year note, which is going to be a lot more in line with those lease programs. So we're still right in there or less than what we would need to contribute from the General Asset Replacement Fund on this as far as annual payments. So, so talking to pretty much everyone on our staff from city manager and down and looking at what we really think would benefit the city the best and why, we really lean toward tax notes. If you had to ask me right now what I recommended. And the reasons are simply, we know what the capacity is in our General Asset Replacement Fund, and so tying up that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars right away every year for the next seven to ten years, that's a pretty big hit to that fund. And so we would require additional money transferred over from the general fund to offset that. So we're spending the money regardless either way, but that, that's going to directly hit the general fund. Benefit of investment income, so rates are still high. We're investing right now at about five point eight percent. So, you know, if we were to receive money in February and even say that rate went to five, which we can't predict really what it's going to do. I don't see it dropping in the next six or eight months, that's my opinion only. But we would turn around and invest those funds to offset some of that interest rate. My idea with that, as Chief Maloney and I talked about future planning, kind of goes in line with what we've talked about with our asset replacement plan, and that is whatever interest we were to make off of that is that we would designate that as a future fire truck reserve fund. So if we were to make a hundred thousand dollars, and that's just a random number, then that money would be earmarked in the future as we start talking about building fund balance so that if we wanted to at least partially cash pay for something, or let's say we had something catastrophic that happened with one of our engines that we had to come up with a large sum of money on something that wasn't covered by insurance or something like that, then we would have some money earmarked and reserved for that going forward. So instead of it going into the general distribution from interest revenue, then we would earmark that solely for that purpose. Definitely lower interest rate than the lease programs, and that's because the dealerships are going to get their money. I mean, they're, they're running the program, they're managing it, they're managing our payments for us and those kind of things. So they're going to naturally have more interest, just as if you were to lease a vehicle from a dealership rather than purchasing it. And then, of course, you know, we control the funds. And so that, to me, that's a big one, that we're not relying on someone else to control the funds. And then we talked a little bit about increased transfer from operations to be able to sustain those annual lease payments that we'd be committing to really for the life of the lease. So those are really the funding options that we came up with. I don't know if you guys want to discuss that a little bit first, or we can talk about next steps, one way or the other?
Council, further questions on any of these?
What is the interest amount wind up being on, if you go back to the four point one nine percents over seven years? What are we actually paying for that?
I have that, and I can let you know, and I'm going to ballpark, say, two hundred thousand. I'm, I'm using that as a very general ballpark number because I do have that, and I have looked at it. But I'll, I can get back to you on that unless.
So winds up costing about one point two million instead of a million.
And it's in that neighborhood regardless of whether we do a five-year or a seven-year. And I do have that number, and I, I can get that for you because we looked at the total debt capacity.
And the advantage, too, of going the tax note would be being able to invest in. So if we're projecting to invest at five point eight, then we're really just covering down on principal. Principal plus. So assuming we continue the investment strategy, one million is what we're looking at. Even though we've been paying the interest, it's important note that our investment would, would break even. Or break even or plus. Going the municipal lease option and going the other option, you'll see those typically in cities that don't have debt capacity, can't issue tax notes, or their interest rates are so high, they're not getting the benefit. But the other side, and because it's such a long-term turnaround, we really get to sit on, we'll call it cash, it's not cash, but restricted funds for potentially two years before we start drawing. So that's going to continue to accrue interest much longer. So that's the thought, but it's really going to be.
Correct. And we did take a look, we had Ann, you know, run some numbers for us after we kind of said this is what we would be looking at. So on a tax note of this size, seven years would be the max really that most banks want to issue them for. So we ran it for two options, and we had her do exactly what you're saying and, and run it with that. There is zero impact to the debt fund. Like you can't, two million dollars on a, you know, whatever our general fund is now, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have that in my head, a hundred million dollars total, both funds, there's no impact. So we looked at the rate over years, and there's not even, doesn't even move the needle. Like as far as if we were to do this, that was the first thing I looked at, is is it going to impact what our overall debt rate is? Because two million dollars doesn't make a big enough impact, especially with growth and those kind of things, to impact it at all. And we're slowly seeing that drop just because of the nature of, of what we have now.
And then really, the other operational component, Julie, at seven years, fire trucks are what?
Twelve to eighteen, depending on which chief you talk to. So it'll, do what? So even, so even at, even at seven years, that'll, that'll be paid off, and there'll still be another.
Fifteen, sixteen years.
Fifteen, sixteen years on that fire truck. So the return on investment long-term is, is still going to be there.
Right.
It's not like we're paying on a twenty-year note on a fire truck that's going to be end of life.
A twenty-year.
Because that was the, you know, the lease option. I mean, I'm, I'm about gaining assets, but what do we owe on the lease at the, at the end of the lease?
That's right.
What do we owe?
Right, because we're making these payments in order for them to hold the lease for us. And then whatever the book value is at the end of that period is what it would be required for us. And really, they're in game, and I get it. I mean, it's, it's a business model for them. Really, what they want to happen is after the end of that ten years, they want you to turn it in and renew the lease and continue on with a new lease. So they have long-term money coming in, and it's a great business model for them. We really have to look at what makes sense for the city and best use of funds as far as, you know, we're spending taxpayer dollars. You know, and either way, if, if we're using it out of the debt service fund, then again, we're sharing the cost of a large capital investment over multiple years with, you know, other people who may, instead of just hitting the general fund every year with current property tax.
And that reserve vehicle that's in poor shape, is it in such poor shape that we can't sell it maybe to a smaller community that might benefit from it through one of their volunteer fire departments?
That is a potential, so now that is four years from now, so it's forty-four months. But that is a potential. In the past, pre, we have donated to Hunt, we have donated to Center Point. But I do think that although that is being good neighbors, I do think if there's an opportunity to return some cash, if we could sell it and put it into this, this fund, that's going to help us down the road and make it more sustainable.
Something. Okay.
There's, yeah, there are so many numbers going around. Are we proposing to buy one or two? Okay, so we would, we would be borrowing with these tax notes?
Two million dollars.
Two million dollars.
Give or take, and that's, you know, based on our current, our current estimate of about nine fifty. And once they do the build-out, we'll know more. But that, that's, we were pretty conservative, I mean, we're pretty liberal with that. Like we made sure that if we issued two million, we would have enough to do. So, you know, it could be a little bit less than that, just depending on. You know, and the sad thing is, we won't know that until we get, or really into January as far as exactly what options cost.
My question would be, do we anticipate needing money for anything else along this line in the very near future where we might need to do this again?
Well, we would think in three years, we would need to consider something. What that looks like, I don't know, and I think it would depend on what we're able to set aside and build because as Chief said, you know, they were, they would really like to get us on a two-year rotation so that we can get some of these older trucks out of the fleet. The other things that are smaller dollars, we're able to handle from the asset replacement fund. These are just big dollars that, you know, it would pretty much deplete what we have in the asset replacement and then require future councils, we're pre-committed.
Well, I really meant, not with fire trucks, but just in general, do, do we anticipate asset replacement needing a couple other million in a couple of years here?
Well, I think the biggest, the biggest things that we see on the horizon for asset replacement, and I, I won't speak to specifically a tax note, but what I will say is we have a special operations vehicle on PD that's a pretty large dollar amount, like a couple, eight hundred thousand?
We'll be there.
Something like that. I feel certain. That was one of the bigger items as we were working through our inventory with rolling stock and equipment that was coming up, that, you know, we just don't have the capacity to manage that one right now. That was the big one. The other ones, you know, were under a couple hundred thousand in those ranges that we found. So that would be the other big-ticket item that I can see potentially needing to be replaced in the near future.
And the other thing on the asset, fixed asset replacement fund or whatever we want to call it, in every year, but in two years, we're going to have a much greater understanding of the trends and how that's funded and where we're going with that. I mean, it could, next year can completely change it. So we've, obviously, the team has just started looking at that, and we're going to continue to look at that. And we're going to have a better idea of the inventory, where it's going, how we're going to get there, what, to the point of what funding needs to come, you know, each year without tapping into it. And this is just an opportunity to not tap into rainy day funds, non-tap or wipeout asset replacement funds, and just continue to give us an idea to plan for two thousand and twenty-seven. But we're going to have a far better understanding of the asset replacement over the next couple of years.
And as we've talked, I mean, that's something that's been top priority in the last couple of years and something that we've really been working hard on. And we have a much better understanding of what we own and rightsizing. We've been doing a lot of that. If we don't need it, then let's get rid of it, and we're putting that money back into the fund. So there's a lot of work going on. There's about fifteen of us that are working on that project, and so we're making really good progress. But, you know, two million dollars is still two million dollars regardless of, regardless of how much we can save and scrape and set aside. It's a lot of money to spend upfront or commit over a long period of time at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per.
And the vision for, for the replacement plan is to really get something down that could be more sustainable. So we're not coming to you with, we have two that we need to purchase. We're purchasing two now. We won't be coming back for another two unless we have significant growth that we need to put another station.
It'd be one, one, one.
The concept is really to get that more flattened, so it's more, more sustainable and physically, too.
Well, and like we've talked about with setting aside for even, you know, our building maintenance fund or our facilities fund, you know, we did a hundred thousand dollars this year. You know, the, the, kind of the future to me looks like looking at where do we need the reserves and starting that a little bit early so that, I mean, we're saying, yes, we can bank the interest, but, you know, what's that going to do for us in three years? And are we going to be to the point to where we have that million dollars we need or one point five by then? Who knows, depending on what inflation does? And so that we can start that and, and do some set aside. And that's what we continue to hear from the podium. That's what we continue to hear for the last two or three years, and that's really why our focus has been on that.
Roman, questions, comments?
Nothing more than what's said.
Jeff?
Just going back to the old car days, Chief. When you, say we order a truck today, you get it in two years. How does that affect the vehicle? Is it out, is it already two years old when, when we receive it? Like, I mean, I know there's lights that change, there's different things that change on it. Another thing about it, too, is, you know, if that's, if that's what it is, it is what it is. But also, so when we order these trucks, as soon as we take delivery of the new ones, we're going to turn around and order two more, basically is what, what I'm understanding, correct?
One more.
One more.
One more, yes.
Well, it'll be one. The, the way we managed it and looked down, vision down the road, way, way beyond me being here is really try to flatten this for every three years. And seven total in the fleet, that gives us a 21-year. There's an Ariel in there, that's a big one. But that's the 2 million. But that, that's what we're trying to do is really try to spread it out.
Two to start and then one every two years after.
And great question, yes. Some parts on there, yes. So what we currently own, we have two, what we call 2019s. They were built, that chassis is a 2018 that they actually have on there. These would not be built until 24. We wouldn't even have to start building that for probably 25, probably somewhere in the 25 range, maybe even 26. So this is just getting in line because everyone's, everybody's in line right now. And unfortunately, the vendors know it, in which case, this is probably going to be the sweet spot of where we're going to be paying. And it's a big change. It's a significant change. 57% is, I guess, why I look at it overall. And that's pretty significant, plus the more lead times. They're not even delivering faster. I mean, if they were doing faster, you'd go, okay, I'll pay a little more. But they're not even doing that. It's slower, 44 months, double, almost double the cost. So.
Hey, Chief, on the, typically on these trucks, SCVAs, which is some of the technology that can get outdated usually is a component and part of these apparatus, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so how many SCVAs and what would be the dollar amount typically replaced that these tax notes, tax notes could usually help us offset some of those replacement repair costs?
The SCVAs, we have that one in our asset replacement. That one's coming up in the next three years to have that conversation because we bought a lot of those five years ago when we purchased those. So we're taking a, a good look at those, which once again, is a large number that we actually have in our, in our possession. But that one, we have the asset, in the asset replacement plan.
Correct.
So, but yeah, when we put these in, it was a great exercise. I don't mean to take, but when we did this as a team and sat down and really put together, even me as chief, when I put this down and take a look at not just our assets from apparatus, which sometimes easy, but everything else from SCVAs, it becomes alarming. And we look at the city in general, you go, wow. And the two engines at a million dollars stuck out. It really did.
Very good. If I can clarify, did, so did you say that we will possibly be using tax notes again two years from now to buy that one additional engine?
Well, not necessarily. It was just, I think the question was posed that if we saw anything futuristically that would potentially require this. And the only two things I can really think of is depending on how much we're able to save and set aside for the engine that needs to be ordered in three years and the, the large special operations vehicle in PD. So I, I mean, that's just me thinking ahead. It's not saying right now today, oh, don't worry, we're coming back to do this again. It's just if, you know, things that maybe the general asset replacement fund can't handle on its own, just with normal transfers.
So we're still exploring options to buy that third engine?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And, but the idea would be here, any interest we make, it gets set aside and then perhaps through the budget process that we start setting aside a little bit. Because, you know, if that one also takes three to four years, then that gives us some time to save up even potentially half of that funding. And then it doesn't hurt the asset replacement fund so bad to pay out the remainder of that.
Yeah, okay.
So I think just as an option, if you just had to ask me what big ticket items are coming, those are the two that stick out in my mind without digging further.
Okay, thank you.
As the asset inventory, you know, some of the older, we'll call it more end-of-life inventory starts falling off, when you actually start, you know, going to a five or seven year trade-in or, or auction or sell or whatever, you're going to get a higher dollar amount on that trade-in versus wheels falling off going to auction. And so as some of the older inventory falls off, new stuff comes in, we start actually having kind of a plan, you can almost start one-for-one-ing it to the point of, yeah, we might have to do a tax note at half a mil versus a mil, but we can pay cash for the rest.
Yeah.
So get the money to work for us.
And of course, we're always looking for grant opportunities as well. And I think you see that quite a bit. And we bring as many grants to the table as we possibly can.
Okay, so what you would like from us today is?
So basically, just to kind of let you know where we are. So as we talked about, if you were to give a direction that you, you know, wanted to explore this a little bit more, then we would have to bring you an ordinance for action to issue a tax note or a potential resolution if, if the lease is the way you wanted to go. We would have to complete all the documents as far as issuing debt. And then, of course, look at direct placement versus negotiated, which I really feel like in this market, direct placement, especially for a small dollar amount like this, I mean, $2 million is a lot of money, but when you're talking about issuing debt in our market, that's really small. I think that'll be the best way to go. And then, so Chief, do you want to talk about your next steps really quick? Because you're going to be able to speak to that better as far as what you guys have to do.
Yeah, so we put together an engine task force to not just look at the vendors. One of my charge, but that is, I know it's going to be red, it's going to be shiny, but we need to look a little deeper now. What's operational needs? What is some of the maintenance programs that they provide? What's some of the emergency repairs? Working definitely directly with a garage for this to look a little farther. So we have three motivated drivers at the rank of driver that are providing this, that are looking into three of our regional vendors. I'm not looking for somebody in New, in New Orleans, there are some other great ones, but there, we need something local around here to be able to provide. They're working on that. We're with Deputy Chief Stephen Boyd, hoping to have kind of a vendor selection a lot closer, probably in the January, and then we'll be able to actually come back and go ahead. We'll have a good quote by then when we take a look. And, you know, we've already been talking to a few, trying to get some ideas of what they actually have, of what they can provide, what service they can provide.
So really, I guess what we need from you is just thoughts and direction so that we know what to do next, to be able to bring you better information. So I don't know, what's, what's your charge?
All right, so Counsel, are, are you comfortable with going with the tax notes? That's probably the first question, most important question.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's the cost of doing business, unfortunately. And, you know, I hate that the price is almost doubled.
Me, too.
But I would much more prefer that the interest that can be gained on the money while it sits there, that it, it helps offset what we're actually going to pay in interest. And I would feel more comfortable with a tax note than I would with a lease.
Same. Joe, same? Roman?
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm more comfortable not doing a lease.
Okay, Joe? Oh, Joe, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Jeff.
I think a tax note.
Comfortable with that?
It's, uh, I am, yes.
Okay.
I really think that's going to have the least impact to the city long-term. So, and that was really kind of our, through our research, is what, what's, what are we going to get the most for our money and what's going to have the least impact?
Yep.
It feels like we kind of keep it to ourselves a little bit more that way.
Right, right. So, okay, well, we will just kind of move forward on next steps. You know, obviously, Chief has a lot of work to do on their side. And so I don't know, do we need a motion? Or just, I can just bring that back later?
I, I mean, a motion would be great. I, I think that locks everyone in, right?
In that way, that'll direct us to what we're supposed to do next.
Okay. All right. We just basically need a motion to, for you to proceed with the issuance, looking into the issuance of tax notes and.
And I'll make that motion.
Okay. All right, we have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we do. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous.
Thank you, we'll get to work.
Very good.
Thank you.
Are you okay with the motion, Shelley?
Yes, ma'am.
With what we've got?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Chief. And thank you, Julie. Your good work, and we appreciate it. All right, I believe we are at executive session time. So do we have, will someone make a motion to?
I move to go into executive session under sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.087 for items 3A and 3B.
All right, a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor? And at 4:38, we will recess into executive session upstairs. Okay, here we go. It is 5:50, and we are recessed from executive session, back into the regular workshop. And there is no report to be made. So at 5:51, we will adjourn the Curville City Council Workshop.